I'd like to call the August 19th, 2021 meeting to order. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Morgan Alley.
Here.
Oniski.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
Alley.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Beltran Di.
Here.
Burns.
Here.
Figgy.
Away on vacation.
Clarity.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Matthews King.
Here.
Mello.
Here.
All rise for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, in the name of justice, law, and
The reading of the record, Counselor Beltran Di.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to accept the reading of the record of the meetings of June 17th and July 1, 2021, and special meetings of July 13th and August 4th, 2021, as submitted.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the minutes? Counselor Morgan Alley?
That I was not able to be at the August 4th meeting, doing these as a lump. I need to abstain on that one, right?
Uh, sure.
No.
I don't think you have to.
Because you can read the record.
It's up to you. Any other concerns, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The counselor knows the protocol.
Name an address for the city clerk, please.
Let's see if I remember that. I don't have my placard, too. Mary Ann Babinski, 114 Rogers Avenue. Good evening. It's nice to see all these friendly, happy faces. I hope you remain friendly for the rest of the night. I'm here because it was an issue that came to my attention as a former ward councilor, whatever, about an agenda for today's meeting where it was a posting about a public hearing and people were not sure what that was about. Somebody asked me if it was happening tonight. I said I didn't know because I always got two notices, not only the agenda, but first the posting, two weeks ahead of time, of when the public hearing was going to happen. And then, of course, the posting of the agenda, when that public hearing was going to take place. So there was no information about what this was. People, I think it was bad timing. And I respectfully would request that the city council vote to postpone that public hearing today because there are people who followed up with me afterwards and are concerned because they would have spent some time coming here, wanted to research information. They said there's not enough time. They don't even have anything at all because we used to. I can remember sitting over there, one of those seats over there, and asking that there is a place on the city council website where it says pending applications. Planning Board does this, too. My ski partner over there would attest to that, that when there's a public hearing, they post the whole application and all the details about the project so that people could look at that and be prepared when they go to the public hearing to kind of address and know what right questions to ask if they're going to ask questions of fact. So this particular time, there was nothing. So I looked for it because this is what I was used to, getting one, first the public notice on the city website, and then having that information available for the residents who are going to tend to come to the public hearing to look at what this project was all about. There was nothing. It appeared today on the city council Agenda Center page as a public, as the application, public hearing for Old Dominion at nine minutes before 3:00. So people responded to me that that was not enough time for them to be able to build any or find out or get any information to address the issues that were there. So they respectfully asked if there was a way to have this postponed so that there would be the 14 days' time, enough time for them to be able to look at the information and be able to come here and address the issue during the public hearing, which they are allowed to do. So that's why I'm here. I'm presenting that to you now. I know it's on the agenda and you'll have to take a vote at some particular point in time. There are other options. I'm throwing that one up. Somebody else may mention another one. Thank you for your time. And it's good to see all of you.
You, too, Mary Ann.
Hi. Mary Beth Marion, 106 Roosevelt Ave. And my concern that we have coming up next week starts teachers back to school. Next week starts students getting ready to go back to school. We really don't have any COVID information out there for kids, Delta variant. Little kids can't get vaccinated. There's no, there's nothing on the website in either the Ukrainian language, the Russian language, or the Spanish language to give people the information that they need. One of the concerns that I have is there's not really been a lot of outreach for this. And just knowing how chaotic the school year was last year, as an educator myself, this is one of the biggest things that I think we need to start thinking about in Westfield and not work on it when it happens, but be prepared for it should it happen. Is there any way that we're going to be able to do any of that for COVID-19 outreach, research, education, marketing, multi-language? I know that we had a vaccine clinic for veterans at the high school. It was for veterans and their immediate families, but that was it. That's all we had. And I've noticed that the numbers have been creeping up. It's the highest number that it's been since, I believe it was March of 2020, April of 2020. I mean, we're at 89 cases now. I don't know how many of those are children. It's not really like, it's not really that much broken down. The information that I had was just a quick glance at the website. And to me, getting that many cases, this much into Westfield, is kind of concerning, especially with the school year starting.
Counselor Harris?
I know Counselor Figgy is not here this evening, but he sent an email saying that there is a vaccine clinic at the high school, for the high schoolers, at the end of this month.
At the end of this month?
Yes.
So that's, but that's the high school students. But what about the rest of the city? You know what I mean? Like...
That would have to be guidance by the health department, I would assume.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yeah, thanks. And that's, I was going to say the same thing. There is some schedule of high school. The school department is responsible for communicating their messages about COVID and all the protocols, and we can't tell the school department what to do, as much as sometimes we would like to. And the health department, I see some laughter over there, so people tend to agree with me. Either that or think I'm nonsense. But, and then the city health department has it on their health page, the updated stats, and they speak for the city when it comes to citywide health practices.
I understand that, but didn't we, as a city, get money for doing COVID things?
We did. We did.
So, but my concern is why has there not been more outreach, more push, more?
Yeah, I mean, as far, as far as this body and the involvement we have, it's really with, you know, to date, to Counsel Flaherty's point and to Counsel Harris's point, it does go with the mayor's office. He dictates...
And then down?
Yeah. Unfortunately, what, you know, we really, I mean, we could suggest, and, you know, we're not prepared to do that now, but we could definitely suggest. But that's really all our power on this particular issue is. And the school department, or the school committee does have their jurisdiction on that.
Okay. And then the Old Dominion thing, like Mary Ann Babinski was talking about, I should wait for the public hearing part of that on this?
Yeah. And you could, you're more than happy to speak about that, that you're able to do that from the podium, but we will have that public hearing, at least we will.
Okay. I mean, my, my only concern was that the meaningful involvement is not there as an, as a environmental justice community. The neighborhoods have a right to, an opportunity to participate in energy, climate change, and environmental decision-making, including needs assessment, planning, implementation, compliance, and enforcement and evaluation. And then neighborhoods are enabled to, and administratively assisted, to participate fully through education and training, and are given transparency, accountability by government with regard to community input, and encouraged to develop environmental energy and climate change stewardship. So being as they are, you know, Ward 1 up there in that, in that district area, is an environmental justice community, it would be fair to have people have the ability to, to research and get their ducks in a row and be calm about what's going to happen. So like soil remediation, what happens if it gets into Arm's Brook? How are they going to put out fires? Is it going to be more PFAS?
Mr. President, point of order, we're not supposed to do this during public participation when there's a scheduled public hearing.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
That's why I asked before.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I thought we changed that rule some time ago, that people were able to speak from the podium and things around the agenda.
Not for public hearings.
Ah, I'd like to, I'd like to see that one.
Because it's part of the public hearing record. If we hear things during this part...
I'm sure I voted no against it, but I think it came in play, so that's...
My bad if it was, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'll yield to these guys. It's, you know, you'll have the opportunity.
Let me know if I need to come back up.
We're going to probably take it out of order, too, to move on this, because I know most people aren't here for it, so that's probably what we'll try.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sandra Mackler. I live at 267 Sackett Road. And I have volunteered at the Westfield Soup Kitchen for the last 25 years. Like everyone here, I'm sure, my life and the lives of my family have been impacted by the pandemic. But what motivated me to start making phone calls to everybody in this building and beyond is what I've seen, the impact on the soup kitchen. Handing out brown paper bags on the sidewalk because we haven't let anybody enter the building since the pandemic, which seems like forever, is, has gotten old at best. We did this all winter. We do it now in the heat and in the weather we're having tonight, for example, and it's been challenging at best. The people who have been our meal providers have stuck with us and we're really, and we're fortunate, and we're fortunate that they have stayed. Most of our volunteers are older, even older than I am, and they've been, you know, they've been real troopers about it, and their commitment has been really outstanding. So I made a bunch of phone calls, and I learned that if you make enough phone calls, eventually you get put on a committee. So I got on that committee, but, you know, you're careful what you wish for. And initially, I thought the committee was comprised of the local Department of Health people, state DPH people, Bay State Medical Center, and then various, you know, individual volunteers from Westfield, like myself. But I soon determined that actually the Westfield Department of Health had no involvement whatsoever, which surprised me. I personally spoke with the mayor and told him of our plans and, and asked for money. The money was $2,500, not a huge sum, and we were going to spend that money on promotional activities and also gift cards, $10 gift cards, not a big deal, just as a means of saying thank you to people who are vax-resistant, as we say, or as everybody else says, and just to thank them for stepping up and changing their minds and getting the shot. I learned 24 hours later that that money was, in fact, not available. So the promotional activities went by the wayside because nobody, including Bay State, nobody was willing to step up and pay for. I did learn that the health department would be exploring alternate funding sources. Apparently, there were three potential funding sources that were dedicated to COVID-related expenses, but I was told that the funds had been allocated elsewhere. Per my most recent communication from the health department, essentially, I'm quoting somewhat, that the health department, the Westfield Health Department now, has reached out to their fiduciary agent for the Health Coalition they belong to, and they'll get back to us regarding any potential funding. You know, I, I, frankly, I don't know what that means, and hopefully somebody here does, but I don't. So we did end up holding three vaccination sites in Westfield on August 2nd, August 11th. Only a handful of folks showed up. I had personally contacted the Westfield Evening News, and they were kind enough to put it on the front page, and also the local access station, and some individuals were nice enough to put it on their Facebook pages. But that was the extent of our promotional activities, and it just, you know, it wasn't enough. So, you know, here's my issue. As of this week, because I do read the website occasionally, you know, 49% of Westfield residents have been vaccinated, which is lower than the 51% of Hampden County, which, of course, is significantly lower than the state of Massachusetts, which is, I believe, believe as of today, it was 65%. COVID cases increased by 100, in Westfield, COVID cases increased from 140% from the prior week. 85% of the new cases here were unvaccinated people. And we know that, you know, here in Westfield, because they do track these things like everywhere else in the country and probably the world, it's our younger folks under 30 who are largely unvaccinated. So here's my thing, like, I think that we can do better, and I think that we need to do better. And I'm frustrated by the lack of commitment that I've seen on the part of the city to improve our vaccination rate. So it feels like here we go again. And I see ourselves, you know, a year from now, you know, being out on the sidewalk, you know, sweating in the heat, handing out brown paper bags to people, and I'm not looking forward to that, frankly. So we know because...
Motion to extend the...
Second.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Keep talking. Okay.
Well, just we have the vote, since there's a motion. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Laura, your turn.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we know it's worked in other communities, and it's collaboration among public health, at the local public health officials, faith-based groups, businesses, local, local agencies, and individual volunteers, kind of like myself. So this takes some effort, it takes some funding, and a little bit of imagination. We know that the more people who get vaccinated, the likelihood, the greater the likelihood that we're all going to be able to resume our normal lives, which would certainly be a wonderful thing. So I'm here tonight because I'm asking for your support. I think we need the city to initiate a task force, to develop strategies to address this problem. We need our local leaders to get involved in the planning and implementation of these strategies. We recognize that a one-size-fits-all approach is unlikely to be effective, and that local outreach will hopefully provide some valuable insight in how best to accomplish this goal. We're going to need financial support from the city, which has not been forthcoming thus far, and frankly, you know, it's just me, and I don't know how to do that, which is why I'm asking for your help. So when I read your agenda item number five and saw that the city of Westfield is on the verge of accepting over $17 million in ARPA money, I knew that I had to be here tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President, may I? Yeah, I, I will add that there is a website, vaccines.gov. I mean, it's not helping get the word out, but that's, that's a website where, this morning at work, a gentleman I work with was, was asking, you know, where he should get vaccinated and this and that. We went there on that website about 10:00 in the morning, and he had an appointment at 4:00 this afternoon. So it's, it's a resource that's out there, and it was, you know, real easy to use. So I just figured I'd mention that.
For you who are aware that it's there and are motivated to do it, that's a challenge. The State Department of Health has, has great resources available, and all kinds of stuff you can access online, frankly, but, and it's helpful to a point. But I think what we need is a real grassroots effort, and hopefully, to reach the people who, and they haven't been reached yet, let's put it that way. They don't have the message, they're not motivated enough to do what your friend did. And I think we can change that, but it seems like that 49% number of Westfield has COVID and that's not a good for our campus schools.
Great, thank you.
It's, Mr. President, I just wanted, since it was referenced, I just wanted to make clear that the vaccine clinic on August 26th at 2:30 at Westfield High is open to the public, and they are, there will in fact be some gift cards, because I think everybody on this esteemed group has contributed as well, but they did privately raise the money for the gift cards that they're giving out. I think they're calling them raffle prizes, but, but that is open to the public. It is not just for high school students. So August 26th, 2:30 at Westfield High School, because I couldn't agree more with you that that vaccine percentage is, is unacceptable, and we need to do a better job. And that was from Counselor Figgy. Him and his wife have been organizing that, so.
My name is Tam Berdinsky, and I live at 399 Russellville Road, here in Westfield. I am here in regards to number 19 on tonight's agenda. I am requesting that the information given to the council be made public and placed on the city website, and that this request be added to the file. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council?
Good evening. Hi. I'm Kathleen Hillman. I live at 179 Susan Drive, and I am here to give you some good news. We are, after many months of asking Barnes to do their Restoration Advisory Board, it has started. We have met twice on Zoom on August 11th and August 17th. I have been nominated, or chosen to be a co-chair of this committee with Eric Roulet and Colonel Halesk from Barnes. I just wanted you to know that after Kristin has asked for so many times for this to be put through, and my asking Barnes to do this, it is happening. Hooray. Thank you.
Thank you. Just proving if you make the call, you end up on a committee.
Hello. Good evening. Connie Adams, 354 Root Road, Westfield. So I'm here also to support Mary Ann's request that we postpone the public hearing for the Old Dominion request. We were all blindsided. Many of us are very closely monitor, you know, things that happen in our neighborhood, and this would be one that we're very interested in, me especially, because I'm so concerned about fire mitigation and preventing any kind of water pollution, and I haven't had a chance, nor have I found any kind of a plan that addresses any of those issues. So I would really like you guys to consider postponing it so that those of us who have an interest, even though we're not exactly a butters, have a chance to prepare. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Anybody else in the chambers wishes to address the council? Counselor Morgan Alley, did you have a letter that you wanted to read into the record or not? You want to...
Well, yes, but I thought that I was going to read that during the public hearing.
Oh, it's for that public hearing. I thought you wanted public participation.
It's my appearance. Got it.
Counselor Flaherty?
Motion to suspend the rules and take item 21 out of order.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on taking the item out of order?
Just that the audience is here, for that matter, and we have a long list of stuff.
Any other questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call the public hearing to order. Are the petitioners here? Take the mic, or take the podium, if you don't mind.
Mike Skuski, 3001 Armory Drive, Suite 200, Nashville, Tennessee.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Why don't you just give us an overview on what's going on, and we'll start with that.
So I'm the general contractor building the Old Dominion Freight Line site. I have my petroleum vendor here, Ron Sled, as well. He submitted an application for a diesel fueling station at the Old Dominion Freight Line site, and it is going to be a closed, it's not a public site, it's strictly for Old Dominion to fill their tractors on site, to prevent them from clogging up, going to, you know, a pilot or a flying J that is, you know, outside along the freeway. This will allow them to fuel directly there, make it more efficient, and reduce trips and congestion on the public, public roads.
Okay. Any questions by the council for in particular stuff? Yep. Counselor Mello?
So are, are we, is this the whole public hearing now? Are we discussing the residents' request now?
We, we are. I know there, there's been some concern about outreach and so forth on the process, and, you know, although in the beginning of this process, the, the item was not placed on our agenda a few weeks back to be put into committee, or at least to schedule a public hearing. We're at the point, in, in my opinion, that we would leave it open, and then we could have further discussion as the weeks go on for this particular item. Gentlemen's were coming from, you know, Nashville and other places, so we were, we were hoping that we could at least get the bulk of the, the project down. We could leave the public hearing open for other comments and concerns and questions and so forth, and then we, we'd readdress it then. It was an oversight by the clerk's office, and so we're, we're trying to mend this together a little bit because of the distance of the petitioners. Counselor Mello?
Okay. So here's, here's the thing. The application, as it stands, does not have a lot of information that would have been given to like someone like the planning board, and so I, I have a laundry list of questions of things that are not in the materials that I received, even the materials that were posted at 3:00. So what I'm wondering is if, I don't know if we're having in-person meeting for our next meeting, but since the residents who spoke with Counselor Babinski earlier today are not here, they can't receive the presentation that they have traveled so far to give, and those residents have the right to receive that information. And so I'm wondering, if we all end up remote next time, do you really want to present it twice? And so I'm just, I'm just wondering what the most efficient use of everyone's time is if the residents who are not present are going to need that same presentation later, and you've got someone here who has a laundry list of technical questions that are not included in the application materials.
We can answer all your technical questions now. I mean, I have my subject matter expert here.
And you brought the diagrams of the tertiary containment system and the MSDS sheets for everything you're going to do in the fire suppression system and the water discharge, where the effluent is going to runoff to, into which aquifer recharge?
No, it's not going into an aquifer. It's going into the...
Oh, yes, it's...
That specifically is going into the sanitary sewer system.
No.
How is it, I mean, I'm...
Well, see, because the application doesn't have any of the stormwater runoff information, and there's no information about a tertiary containment system, so if you have a fuel system, any of your fire suppression, which you would need to have, with a tank that big, is going to end up being PFAS-laden, and we're already very saddled with PFAS contamination. So my questions will be technical and thorough. And so if you haven't brought that information, I'm telling you, we're going to do this again. That's, that's all I'm asking. Is this the most effective use of our time?
Counselor Morgan Alley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can concur with the council on my right. I, perhaps the best way to, and I know Counsel Flaherty has hand up, too, but perhaps the best way to go about this is to have them make their presentation, maybe present questions, and at least that the counselors have. And, and I plan on keeping the, motioning to keep the public hearing open so that we can thoroughly get the questions answered from the public. I mean, I've got a letter here. We've had many people that have shown up tonight. If, you know, with, with COVID, we had no public participation much. We had some Zoom. This is, I commend the people that came here tonight to, to participate. This is terrific. And that, if that's any indication of the passion that they have for their, their community there, then there's a lot more people out there that really want to weigh in on this and, and ask questions and get some answers. So that's all. I just wanted to say that. Perhaps we can get some information, and then maybe we'll have actually more questions after these gentlemen present what they have to present tonight.
That is the plan. Counselor Flaherty, then Alley?
Yeah, thank you. And I, you know, I wasn't a fan of this to begin with, but I, we talked about what we have to do tonight. We have a public hearing scheduled. I think it's appropriate to have the public hearing, keep it open. This is being recorded, so people that are at home and can't make this meeting tonight can watch it on tape. They can see all the question and answers and any information provided. The item before us is a fuel permit, which doesn't go to planning, it only comes to city council. It's then going to go to the license committee and have further hearings there. So it's not like we're going to make a decision tonight and move on and not give anybody a chance. There's going to be subsequent meetings and... There's going to be subsequent meetings and I think it's appropriate, these guys traveled a long way and even though I don't want many more trucks in town, I think the process has to be, you know, they're here for a fuel permit and that's what we have to review, not the rest of the whole project. We're focused on a full fuel permit. It doesn't have to follow the planning board methods. It follows our methods. And we should have enough time here. If we record this meeting tonight, the people shouldn't see it. They'll have a couple of weeks to review it. They'll have the same documents we have and we can continue the public hearing the next time and if these guys want to come back again or if they want to do it remote, I think that's an adequate solution and it's fair to the applicants and the people of Westfield. Thank you.
Counselor Alley?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm going to echo Counselor Flaherty in that the city council is just looking at this as a fuel permit. We've got one heck of a responsibility for this because I'm almost surprised that something of this magnitude wouldn't go through the planning board as far as, you know, site plan approval. Because I'm almost kind of surprised because, you know, I mean, I like the idea of, you know, fueling trucks as long as it's done safe and you're not on the road and whatever. That actually makes some sense and I've been supportive of a number of things. But this is, we need to do this right because like I know with the planning board and you were a planning board member, I mean, the planning board does a great job. And I'm almost surprised that this doesn't fit under that category because they're very thorough in, you know, as far as the site plan approval and all that sort of thing. So we've got our work cut out for us.
Fuel storage is always stated with the council. It's not a special permit. It's a permit for the storage. It's a little different in that nature.
Right, but there's technical aspects that the planning board does a great job that within that purview, that's what they do, they spend hours. We don't, to be honest. I mean, just, so.
Is one of those items years ago that we tried to switch over?
I believe, I mean, counsel, if you could play a better answer.
It is what it is. It's a fuel permit here. I'll go counsel Belltrandy first.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the public hearing. This is going to be thoroughly vetted through the whole process. This isn't over tonight. I mean, you know, they're here to make a presentation. It's going to go through the whole process. If the public hearing stays open, after we close the public hearing, it's going to go to license, which is my committee. At that point, you know, there'll be more input. Again, this license is through the council, has nothing to do with the planning board and there's a reason for that. Okay? The planning board has their job, we have our job. So I'm in favor of leaving the public hearing open and getting the rest of the information, you know, that we need, getting the public their access to this, but I think we need to keep moving it forward. This project's already been going on for long enough, you know, we, you know, we're moving forward. I don't think we need to do anything to impede this.
Counselor Bavinsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I agree with all the reasons why we should continue the public hearing. It actually might be beneficial for everyone to, for the public to hear a lot of the questions and a lot of the, you know, the banter, I guess, that goes back and forth. As far as the planning board is concerned, what the planning board would look at on this plan is not whether it's okay to have a storage containment of fuel, but where it is and how it fits in with the flow of everything that's on the plan. So, I mean, this, this isn't built.
No, it is not.
I mean, the planning board may have a, you know, a question as to whether or not this is considered a minor change for the plan or not at this point, but that's about it.
Just a point of clarification, if I may?
Go ahead.
So in other words, at that point, then that's when the planning board would look at what they're going to actually do?
If this came in to the planning board like it did, you know, two years ago, they would look at the location of the storage and if it was, you know, if it was in the way of the trucks traveling back and forth. But, you know, this is past, that we've gone over that bridge. So now it's in our, it's in our department.
Counselor Moll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a problem receiving information tonight if the residents who are not here have the opportunity to receive the information, again, not just listening to it on a recording and have the opportunity to ask questions of fact directly, right? As long as we protect the rights of our environmental justice community members and we do not leave ourselves open to litigation because we didn't protect their rights. I am okay, but they are sitting in front of you. They have asked us not to do this and so I'm asking if the residents will agree to the compromise of them presenting again next time and whether or not Old Dominion would present again so that those residents can have their fair and meaningful engagement, right? Because they have asked for accommodation and they have not received it. So I am asking that we ensure that we protect their rights first. That's what, that's what I'm asking. And then I'm happy to have it continue as long as we leave it open and you present again for the residents who come next time. Thank you.
Counselor Bell?
Just to, just to respond to that, the presentation tonight seemed to me to be about 45 seconds long. Am I incorrect?
No, you're correct and I, we were under the impression that all the information was given out and disseminated and we were coming to answer questions.
All right, so to.
Is what we were given, so.
To respond to that, do you have a problem with making your presentation again two weeks from now?
I'm presenting at the leisure of the council, so it's whatever.
I mean, that would seem to solve the issue. I mean, it's.
If they're going to come back, then there's no point in doing it.
But I mean, it's not like this has been a two hour long presentation. It's been 45 seconds.
I mean, I think we were, oh, I'm sorry. This isn't a discussion.
Counselor?
I mean, I think what we were trying to do as a body was to try to be respectful of the fact that the two individuals had traveled so far to get here to do the presentation, even though there had been, you know, an error on the part of the city that this didn't show up on an agenda item in July. But if they're going to come back, then I don't really know what the point of presenting tonight is. And then just open it up. I mean, I've got no problem if they do the presentation as long as somehow we're ensuring the fact that the residents who aren't here tonight have the ability to ask their questions, their technical questions and get their answers somehow directly from that, which I don't think necessarily means they need to be standing here, but I do think we have to protect that right of the public to ask those questions.
I'm going to go counsel Morgana, then Belltrandy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I kind of agree with Counselor Sullivan, but I would say that the, having the gentleman here twice, it's an advantage to everybody. If we have any questions to ask them, they may give us an answer or they may say that's in the document you're supposed to receive, we'll have that next time. And I also wanted to mention, gentlemen, that we have a big monitor here. If you had a visual presentation, I know I'm more of a visual learner. I love to see things rather than just hear it and that's a great tool that you can, you can use the next time you come to present there in a PowerPoint or whatever you have. So I want to encourage you to do that as well. Thank you.
Counselor Belltrandy, then Flaherty?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to continue the public hearing till our next meeting in September to have the proponent come back and just make a brief presentation and answer the questions as requested by the public and by the council.
Second. Just before I entertain, go ahead, Counselor Flaherty, then Moll.
I don't see anything that can hurt us by hearing what they have to say now and if we have questions right now, we can ask them why they're here and then maybe that'll trigger more thoughts for people that are watching this on TV or read about it later on. I believe this gentleman's been here before. No, haven't you?
This is the first time. I've been here about 12 times.
You've been here, yeah. We've had, we've had, we've had tank experts here before. They all look like you. You know, but, but really, right? No, it's true though, but like all the tanks, right? They go in the ground. They're standard tanks. They're like, you answer the same, everybody that answers questions about tanks says, yeah, they meet this ASTME blah, 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 blah. They're safe, they're double walled, they're triple walled, they're, you know, pressurized, they're unpressurized, they're, you know, they, they tell us the same things over and over again for all the tanks. So I'm sure we're going to get the same answers from you. I would imagine that these tanks are perfectly safe, they're used all over the country and all over the state and they're wonderful and safe and all that. And I'm, I don't, why that would hurt us to hear that tonight so that then these people can go home and say, you know what, we heard about this thing over in Cleveland and we're going to ask you about that, you know? So I don't have a problem taking questions. They went out of their way to come up here. Hate to have them drive all this way or fly all this way for 45 seconds. You know, if we have questions, we want to ask them. I don't know if they're going to have the answers about where it goes in the aquifer, but that, it might be good for them to hear that question tonight so that they can go home and be prepared for the next two weeks when they come back to have an answer for that. So I'm okay with.
Counselor Belltrandy for the fourth time.
I guess what I want to say is that I can see clearly that there's going to be a lot of questions. So if, if we don't allow them to come back and make the presentation over again and address the questions then and they're not here, then I think it's going to be a problem. So I think the best thing to do is to clean this whole thing up. Let's get back here in two weeks, get the questions, get the answers and get it done.
I just, but just want to make everything, whatever the body decides, it's fine, but I, you know, the Butters were notified, it was posted in the newspaper. I know that for, for people, it's not enough, I get it, but there was due diligence on that side. The error was that it wasn't on the agenda in July to go into committee and that's, although there's no rule to have an agenda item to schedule a public hearing in our council rules, by the way. So we're just trying to be mindful of everybody and the sensitivity of the project as well as trying to understand that the petitioners here that are from across the country and we're trying to make at least everybody get the information, not wasted time, money, flights, all that kind of stuff. So that's why I made the decision at least to have, you know, them in and not cancel it today because we found out today that that was the issue. And then hopefully we move forward with, you know, although the, the questions of fact and advocating and all that happens, if it happens twice, I'm comfortable with that. And I know, you know, counselors have a lot of questions and that's fine for me. I'm in the thinking of that we should move forward with this right now rather than keep debating the fact that we should prolong the public hearing for two weeks, so.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to have a vote, have a vote, but I agree with you. I would like to actually hear Kristen's questions and see what the answers are going to be. Let's do some of it tonight. Why wait? It's going to be, it's going to be a public record. So let's, in my opinion, let's do it. Why wait? Let's do part of it tonight.
Okay. Any other concerns on that end before we get into the meat of it? Counselor Alley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question. Is there more documentation that we haven't seen yet that we're supposed to see? Was that not posted? Not now. I think the things are on the shared drive now. Right, okay. But I just wanted to be clear if there was. And I'm sure there's other documentation, if requested, that we can get.
Counselor Burns?
There's a motion on the floor and seconding.
Correct.
It was not, it was not recognized by the chair.
Excuse me?
It was not recognized by the chair.
No, we let him talk. He made the motion. Oh, yeah, no, no, that's, this is something different.
We already wasted 25 minutes, so.
Right. That's, you know.
And I actually think, I think you did recognize the motion.
I didn't recognize it. So we have, let's just have questions of fact for the petitioner? Does people have? Counselor Morgana?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So I have a letter from Amy Beluso who lives in Ward 1. I'm sorry, she didn't give me, provide her address. Dear Counselor Morgana, unfortunately I'm unable to attend tonight's public hearing meeting regarding item 21. She says, I would like a few questions mentioned. Is, number one, is this in addition to the original fuel tank on the plan submitted in
So this is a different system. The plans in 2019 originally had, it was just a DEF dispenser, the DEF fluid, and then that got changed. That's why we're standing here again and submitting this application so the Old Dominion would like to add the fuel island. So it's in addition to.
Okay, thank you. And there are 11 questions, by the way. If not, what, okay, so what plan is in, is put in place in case there is a leak while pumping?
So while pumping, the, there's a canopy over the fuel island. Underneath it is a concrete drive aisle. In that drive aisle is sloped to the center where there is a catch basin. So any fuel that is spilled while they're fueling in this, this area will go down to that catch basin. Once it's in that catch basin, it will go through an oil-water separator where that fuel will be captured in the oil-water separator and then it stays there. Per the maintenance schedule, it gets cleaned out on a durational basis and, you know, disposed it properly.
What plan is put in place if there's a fire?
If there is a fire, well, first of all, this diesel fuel versus, and Ron, you probably can speak to this better than I can, diesel fuel versus regular, regular fuel. So I'll refer to Ron my.
I'm not a tech expert. Even though I may look like one or not. Ron Sled, Jetersville, Virginia.
Can I just ask that you adjust the microphone a little bit? You guys are taller than most who've been up there, so thank you.
He's a lot taller than I am, that's for sure.
I wasn't going to say it, but.
Thank you all for the opportunity. Ron Sled, Jetersville, Virginia. The question about spilling, when you're fueling.
Fire, yeah.
Yes, sir. Oh, we're already gone to fire. Okay, I'm sorry. There is fire suppression. We typically put a fuel, a fire extinguisher on the end of the tank near it where it's accessible and it's the one that, and I'll be honest with you, I can't give you the regs and the names, but it's the one that the National Fire Code calls for, for this type of indication. And I know that we started talking about the flash point of diesel being a lot higher than of gasoline. You just don't have to worry about it. I think it's a, gasoline ignites at 100 degrees, I believe, and the flash point for diesel is 140. So you don't have that inherent fire problem or concern, but we do put the fire extinguisher there to take care of it.
It's a chemical fire extinguisher?
Yes, sir.
Other overhead sprinklers, what happens with runoff from the sprinklers if this occurs?
Well, if you, if typically there's not overhead sprinklers. If that's something that the city requires, then we would obviously address that. If that runoff would occur, it would be caught in that catch basin that Mike, Mr. Skuski or Mike talked about and then it goes into the oil-water separator and then it's dispersed where I guess the county or the city tells us to where it gets dispersed. And I actually have, if I can, I've got some handouts for the oil-water separator and actually the type of tank that we can, if you just want to pass those out, maybe that'll get some questions going. But the oil-water separator, you can actually dump diesel fuel and water because of rain or runoff or whatever in it and you could drink what comes out the other end. I'd never do it, but it's like five parts per million come, actually make it through the oil-water separator. And as I know, we talked to the local authority here and the oil-water separator is not required, but Old Dominion requires it on all of their sites. I work with a lot of different trucking companies and I'll tell you, they are so in tune to taking care of wherever they're at. I take my hat off to them.
Okay, thank you. If Old Dominion closes their warehouse, what happens with this fueling area? I guess if I were to expand on that, is are you required to remove, would you remove that fuel and take it with you if you were, is that usually what happens, I guess?
Yes, it would be decommissioned.
Are there, are there any regulations on how close a fueling station can be to a school? I know you can't, and I didn't, I just got this this afternoon, so I didn't, I wasn't able to, but I don't know if you, if you are familiar with different laws across the country on proximity to a school and a fueling station of this capacity or storage? No? We'll, we'll get that one answered for her. Has the new location been reviewed for impacts to surface and groundwater sources, including times of excessive flooding? Because there, you know, our aquifer that services much of the city, on the north side especially, is on either side of that property. It's all around there, even though where the location is, is not directly in the, on the aquifer. It's, it's right there. It's close by. So that's why she's asking that question is, has it been reviewed for impacts to surface and groundwater sources, including flooding situations?
I believe that would be part of the permitting process, sorry.
So that site has been built up variously from, we put 11 feet of fill in one site back to two feet in the back because the site does slope up from the road, from Madera's Way, it slopes up into the back. We also, when we put the plans through, we also have a, I think it's a million and a half gallons of subsurface water retention that takes all the water on our site, stores a million and a half gallons and then lets it run out slowly into the public drainage. a million and a half gallons, and then lets it run out slowly into the public drainage. So, it's important that this, this fuel island is not tied to that system. It goes into the oil-water separator. Oil-water separator will go into the sanitary sewer system. So, if there's, if there's any issue or spill or anything, that's the path it goes. It doesn't go into the, you know, catch basins that's taking the general storm water and putting it out into any of the ditches or, you know, aquifers or anything. So, it's, it's fairly well-contained.
Okay. Thank you. Is this fuel used for yard vehicles or road-going trucks? So, what's the fuel going to be used for?
Both.
Okay. How often do they plan on having fuel delivered?
That really would, that would depend on how much they use here. And I'm sorry, I don't know that, but some sites, we have it delivered once a week, some sites, longer than that. It really would depend.
You'll be able to answer that in a couple of weeks?
We could probably get some projections from them. Yes, sir.
Thank you. What is an average fuel consumption per week or per month? So, I guess, I'm not really sure what that question is, average fuel consum, I guess maybe for a 15,000 gallon tank that you have somewhere else, what typically do you, how often do you refill that, or how much do you use per week or per month?
I think that would probably be better left, I can come back with an actual figure.
Okay. And that's it for the questions from Ms. Belluso.
Okay. May I address the tank handout that I gave?
Sure.
The tank that we're proposing to use is probably the, it's not probably, it is the most specified tank, I think, in the world. It is a UL 2085. It's a double-wall tank construction. It has a concrete material in between, in the annular space between the two tanks. And we monitor not only inside the tank to tell us how much fuel is in there, we also monitor that interstitial or that annular space so that if something were to leak, by the way, whether it leaked from outside to inside or inside to outside, we would know it. It's 20, it's continuously monitored, just as a way to help mitigate any problems with that. The system, the tank in itself is ballistic proof. It's fire-rated. It is, um, it is basically a, when I say a double-wall tank, it's a tank within a tank. And then in between the two tanks is the concrete material that gives it its fire ratings, ballistic proof. It also is rated for truck impact, although we would have bollards around it that would keep a truck from hitting it. A truck could hit this tank and not damage it. But, we wouldn't allow that to happen the way Old Dominion wants us to build them. Then if we come off a little bit further with, it's similar to when you go fill up your vehicle at the service station. If you were to drive off with the nozzle in your, in your vehicle, and I never knew that that was as big of an issue as it was until I had one hit me from somebody driving, this was at a, just a convenience store. However, if it jerks that hose off, the system stops. There's an impact valve in that hose line that will stop it from fueling. If you were to ever have something to knock the dispenser off, the system stops. If somebody, if you have a, if it were to, all of a sudden start runaway coming out of the hose, the system stops. We put those in just to make sure that we take care of wherever we are, the environment as much as possible.
And a couple of additional questions. The, the list of things that you have in this, for this license is also 55, up to 55 drums of washer fluid and the same amount of antifreeze and the same amount of motor oil. Is, so this is not just a refueling place, that you're going to be servicing the trucks for whatever fluids they need, right? I mean, that's, that's a lot of...
Somewhat, but I think maybe that's 55-gallon drum, not 55 of them?
It says maximum quantity 55, and then it says drum is the container.
Okay, so it's a, yes, sir. That's a 55-gallon drum. And we have, what, the way we do this is we put a conex beside the tank. So, all of that, the windshield washer fluid, antifreeze, and the oil is inside the conex in 55-gallon drums. We pump it out to the island, and it's really just a top-off. They're not servicing trucks. They're not changing oil or anything like that. It's just a top-and-off.
They are spill containment.
And, yes, they have, yes, we have spill containment under those drums as well.
And, and tell me about the propane. It says here, up to 36 20-pound cylinders of propane, but the math doesn't add up because it says 165 gallons total of LP gas.
The propane is for their forklifts on the dock, the propane-powered forklifts.
Okay.
So, that was, when they were putting the permit in, they, they put it on there just to be on the safe side.
So, why does, why does it say 165 gallons?
I'd have to double-check that math that was given to me from Old Dominion, so...
That's, that's over 700 gallons.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll ask him. I'll write the question.
What's this? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Flurry?
Yeah, it says 36 20-pounders, so that's about 700. And you answered my question about the tank, bump ground, and these, I believe, are used in Westfield and other places right now.
Yes, sir.
And it's a common tank. The one thing I noticed on here is that it's not been approved by the fire department yet, and that's usually one of the steps necessary in this process. Normally, it happens before we get the permit, down at the bottom of the second page, I believe. Right now, it's blank, so I think the fire department has to review this and approve it. I don't know whether we are in that process, but...
I'm so sorry. I thought this was the first step.
Okay.
And so, that's a mistake on my part.
Yeah, we have time, but I just know that they have to approve it before, before we can, because if they make changes, then we have to reconsider.
Makes sense.
But, thank you. I, I think Counselor Morganelli answered all my questions, and the flyer did, for now. And I'm sure I'll agree with Counselor Mello when she asks all of her questions about pollution. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Are you willing to accept the legal and the financial responsibility for decommissioning?
I believe Old Dominion...
As a condition of a permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Counselor Hisky?
Thank you, Mr. President. The PDF drawing that I'm, I'm looking at is, is two pages. Am I missing something here? Because it doesn't really show a detail of the, the fuel site. I mean, it, it looks like it calls out for, you know, another section, 1 slash A 103. Is there a blow-up of that somewhere that I don't have?
Let me check. I do have one, one drawing here. It also, I'm not sure what it has on it. Let me see if it has. I only have one copy of this, but you're welcome to it. Pass it to you.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, we'll want to get it on here so everybody could see. So, there is a blow-up, an expansion drawing of the actual...
Yes, sir.
Tank area itself? Okay.
Yes, sir.
What is DEF? It says Fuel and DEF Equipment Site. What's DEF?
Diesel Exhaust Fluid.
Diesel Exhaust what?
Diesel Exhaust Fluid. In 2010, the government said that any diesel engine after that time had to meet certain requirements as far as what it emits into the air, and this is the way that people take care of that.
Okay. How are the trucks going to be fueled? I mean, do they just drive up? Do they come in a certain way? They...
Yes, sir. And typically, that, one of the drawings in that package shows where we believe it would be located, the fuel site on, and that's typically determined by Old Dominion and their operations, how it would not be in the way of vehicles backing up and that type of thing. So, that would be determined by them. And then it would pull up, and the driver itself, himself or herself, would get out and fuel the truck.
Okay. So, somewhere, there is a drawing that kind of shows the flow within?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We just don't have it yet, I guess.
Yeah.
But, can an electronic copy of that be sent?
Yes, sir.
To the city clerk's office, I guess?
When we get that, can we post it so the public can see it?
Asking me?
No. Well, in general, when they send it in, it's now a public document and should have been here. So, can we get it up on the site so that...
Yeah, I'm all for it, yeah.
Okay.
Is that a motion? Okay.
All right. That was it for my questions.
Excuse me. Can, can I ask, will I be able to access this meeting? You said it was online? It will be. Good, because I'm not taking notes, and I know that you're...
Yeah, no. That's okay.
I need to provide you folks with stuff.
We'll, we'll make sure you have a link to the, to the...
Thank you.
Is it my turn?
It is.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The floor is yours, Counselor.
Should I get a chair?
Or a pen, a pen.
You should get a shield.
I, you know, I, I am here to help. So, um, here's the thing. The documentation that we didn't get, that I didn't get until 3 o'clock this afternoon, when I finally received it, didn't answer any of my safety questions.
Okay.
Okay? So, this is what I'm tasking you with. This, very nice. I want to see the blevie stats.
I'm so sorry.
Blevie. Boiling liquid, right? Evaporative, vapor explosion.
Because of the mask and because of my urinate.
Correct. Above-ground storage tanks are known for exploding. And it's called a blevie when it happens, B-L-E-V-E. I want the stats for this tank, please.
Okay.
Okay?
Not only does the tank, and just, I'll get you that for the next meeting, but not only does the tank weigh 40,000, 50,000 pounds by itself with fuel in it, it's about 120, 130, if I remember correctly. And it is also anchored properly, as the NFPA suggests, to the tank pad itself.
Right. See, I'm not worried about where the fallout goes. I'm worried about the, the fire that would come and the A triple F that would be used for it, right? So, speaking of that, when you say fire extinguisher, what's it made of?
It's a chemical fire extinguisher.
That, yeah, okay. So, question number two, what's the chemical fire extinguisher made of exactly?
Okay.
Okay. So, number three, that DEF stuff, what's its chemical composition?
It's one-third deionized water, two-thirds, two, I'm sorry, one-third urea, which is a fertilizer, and two-thirds deionized water.
Okay, urea. The compound in your urine that makes it smell like ammonia, right? And the reason it does is because of the nitrogen, which in our aquifer is a problem because of the septic systems and the nitrogen loading particularly from fertilizers. So, more fertilizer in a place that happens to have extra algae growth is a bad thing. So, when that happens, I need to know where any DEF spills or any spills or discharge that contains the DEF or the containment for the DEF. I need to know where that ends up.
Sure.
Okay? And the diagrams that would have shown me were not included, which is why I'm upset about the diagrams not being there. Okay, so...
I will say this, if I could, just about the DF, DEF tank. It has triple containment, and it's monitored, makes, monitored to make sure it doesn't leak.
And way less explosive. So, yay about that. But, but, it's still a toxin, so, you know, I want to know where it's going.
Sure.
When this project was approved, why wasn't the fueling included in that project? It was approved narrowly in 2019. Why wasn't this included then?
Due to the requirements that Old Dominion had at the time, it wasn't required to have fueling. So, you know, that was over two years ago, and since we just started construction out there, and, you know, the, the economy has changed, logistics has changed in two years, they made the determination internally that they would require fuel at the site. So, that's why we're here again.
Okay.
With the permit, so...
Okay. More questions. How many places are there to purchase diesel fuel within half a mile of this location?
Do you know?
I'd like the answer at the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, I would like at the next meeting, maps from the USGS showing where the watershed goes, right? Because we have learned that a lot of the watershed from the base goes into the Armbrook, and because we are redoing the dam over at Armbrook, it turns out we are responsible for any pollution that ends up there. So, we need to be very careful about any choices about any of the water that ends up in the Armbrook or at Armbrook Reservoir. So, I would like to see the information about the watershed. I would like to see the diagrams that show where any discharge of any fluid from the site goes, right? That's why those maps are so important to me. And I want all of the chemical information for anything stored on the premises, and I want all of the explosive stats for this. And if I have other questions, I'll send them to you. And I'll probably have other questions. And thank you so much. And I really appreciate you guys being willing to give this information again. When the residents come back, I will hold you to it. So, don't short-change them because it's not good. And thank you very much. Thank you. I'm good. I'm good. Yeah, that's for now.
Something's kind of settling in in that.
Any other questions or concerns, or, before I do open it up to the public?
Yeah, one, one more.
Counselor Hisky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you just go through the logic of having it here instead of buying it on the highway? Again, I just don't, it doesn't really settle well with me. I don't quite understand why it's not just as easy for a truck to stop at a pilot or another truck stop, fill up, rather than right there. I mean, they, they stop when they're empty and they, or near empty, and they fill it up and keep going.
That's probably a good question for, for Old Dominion to answer, but I can answer from what I know. Number one, it saves them a lot of time, because sitting in, in truck stops in a pilot, a flying jay, or whatever those situations are, typically, you have a lot of trucks in a line waiting to do it. And it's usually, it alleviates traffic around those fuel sites, if you will. And those fuel sites have a lot of us as consumers, family people, going to fuel and not having to navigate through the parking lots where children are, or, that would be something I would be considered, or be, have to consider. But, I think it's mostly because of time.
Thank you.
Anything else from counsel? I'm going to open it up to questions of fact for the petitioners around the project itself. So, if someone wants to ask a question of fact, please step forward, name and address to the city clerk again, and we'll start with that.
So, can you define the changes between what was originally approved and...
Connie, can you give your name and address to the city clerk? That's okay.
Connie Adams, 354 Root Road.
Thank you.
Can you define the changes between what was originally approved and what's being proposed now?
Yes, the addition of 15,000-gallon diesel fuel tank dispenser.
So, there was no fueling for trucks proposed in the original plan?
Not diesel fuel, but the DEF and conex were should have approved. The depth dispenser, the washer fluid.
But, the 15,000 gallons was not in the original proposal?
That was not.
Okay. Are trucks, other than the trucks that we originally planned for, going to be coming to this distribution center to be fueled?
No.
So, no trucks from Connecticut are going to be coming up to get fueled at this station?
It is Old Dominion trucks that, their site there.
Do they have similar fueling systems at other Old Dominion distribution centers in the region?
Does it have a blinder?
Does not have a blinder. There's Boston has fuel. So, it goes to the region.
Boston, would be up, farther up, up 91 in Massachusetts, Albany.
Their, their site in Vermont, Vermont does not have it. All of them does not have it.
Does the price of diesel that they sell at the, at this site, is it going to be equivalent to the prices that would be charged by local diesel gas, gas stations?
I don't, they don't sell the fuel, they use it, they purchase it from a fuel distributor and then they fuel the truck.
In Massachusetts?
Yeah, a local fuel distributor.
It would be a local fuel, so there's no, there's no change in tax revenue for the, for Westfield or the state of Massachusetts by selling it on the truck distribution center versus a regular diesel fueling station?
I don't think, also, I bet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this really has anything to do with the particular...
It does to me, it's like, it's income to the city. So, and it has to do with income as far as mitigation for, you know, road building and everything else. I mean, that's tax revenue. We should be interested in stuff like that.
I think it's stretching it a little bit.
Okay.
Counsel, go ahead.
If I may, I own a company that buys bulk fuel. We buy it and we have it in a thousand gallon tanks, and it's just because it's a convenience. We still pay the road use tax, still pay the fuel tax.
Okay, that's not a question. Okay, good.
So they're, they're under the same thing.
Okay. Do you know if the fire suppression chemicals that you are going to be employing contain PFAS or the, Kristen, that's her...
Turn polyfluoroalkyl substances?
What she said.
I am not read up on looking at fire extinguisher, so I can't.
So that may be something that we're pretty sensitive about here in Westfield, just so you know, we have a problem with that in our water already.
So what would you propose in lieu of a fire extinguisher to put out a fire?
I think what we would probably propose is whatever is the least polluting at this point, and it might be something different, I don't know that for sure, because I haven't had a chance to read about what you're proposing.
Well, the least polluting would be water, you can't put water in a fuel fire because it's going to spread.
So we'll wait, maybe I'll refine my question and send it to you in writing. Okay. So one of the other things I'm concerned about is the proximity of the school that you guys back up to, and I think that that needs to be really researched and make sure that, you know, from a, from a safety perspective, you're, you border a school. So that can be an issue when you're talking about things like, you know, explosions and stuff. Okay, that's the end of my questions.
You are aware there's a gas station up the road probably three-quarters of a mile.
But it's three-quarters of a mile, it doesn't back up to the same property.
Yeah, but that has sixteen thousand gallons of regular ninety-three octane fuel.
Yeah, I'm not happy about that either.
So, okay.
Like I said, not happy about that either. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mary Ann, do you have questions of fact?
I don't, I'm afraid to ask questions.
I thought you were getting up before, that's why.
Well, I will get up only because you asked.
It wasn't, it wasn't an invite.
Who brought you the mic?
Wait till the next period.
And I, well, I had to stretch anyway, because I can't sit too long, I get stiff. Mary Ann Babinski, 114 Rogers Avenue, still. I just, I don't know if it's a question for them or not, I mean, I have a lot of questions too, but I'm just reviewing, because I listened to all the videos, Vimeo's, whatever, from the last two meetings in 2019, which broke my heart. But the, and I know that there were issues, and you made this comment too earlier, that you would allow other questions when this continues in a couple of weeks, because there was a thing about not allowing people to ask questions again if they had already participated in the first part, part one of part two, and then...
We're just, we're just waiting for your question now.
Right. My question is, all this, I want to just make sure that all of the information that I heard, that they mentioned they had given to this body to review before they got here, may expect it just to ask, be asked questions, will make it on the website under City Council, pending application, so that it can be reviewed by the people that can't be here today.
We will make sure all documentations are on the website.
Yes. Because there, there is going to be a very big concern, I know, and because, and they probably don't know, I don't know if they know what's happening in the state and in the world too. I mean, with diesel fuel, I mean, are you ready to wean yourself off of that soon? And, and you will have to decommission that when it happens, because there's a push in the state too, and we hope, we are a green community, gateway community, environmental justice community, and we are an MVP community, trying to get ready for what's happening in the future. And diesel fuel is, I've sent information out to this body too about different grants that we could go for that would wean a lot of the public vehicles away from diesel fuel, because it does, it's the emissions that we worry about. That's a done deal. Old Dominion is coming, I know. Now we're talking about very critical issues, and I hope that other bodies, other expertise is brought in here to deal with the issues that Christian brought, Counselor Mello brought up about water. We have a problem here, we know that, and there is, that's a critical and sensitive area up there. So they need to be cognizant of that fact, know what we need to protect up there, and make sure that they're doing their due diligence to take care of all these issues. And we have to hear good answers. We have to hear answers that are going to be satisfying us, because our first priority should be, so it's more of a statement than a question, I guess, is environment and the health of the people, and everything else we do should address and make sure they're addressing those two things. That's our top priority. Look at all of these things that we've already done, open spaces and recreation, top two priorities, MVP, top priorities, that's what they are. Everybody here should read those documents. And anybody who comes before us, to give them a chance, so they don't waste their time here either, to know what we expect of any business that wants to come here and do business with us. And sometimes they're not going to be a big, a good fit. We try to stuff too much stuff in here, and I said before, and I was, we could get just a corny little statement, we have visions of all big things in business bringing here, some businesses won't be a fit. No matter how much we try, we're not going to fit them into Cinderella's slipper, because it's too much for us to handle at different times. So I hope that they, that they will listen to the video, but over all the questions that were brought up here, and that they will come back with some answers that will help us feel comfortable with what this is. Because, you know, if you look back at the 2019 things, I was not a proponent of them coming in here. Not that I have anything against Old Dominion, it is just that we've got a lot of things to deal with here. The environmental justice has been codified into law, it had been mentioned already by Mary Beth Berian earlier today, and we know that that has to be addressed by this community too, because that whole, a big chunk of that area up there is environmental justice. And those people need to be able to be addressed, their concerns need to be addressed, and that to be taken into consideration. And I'm not going to go on forever, and I keep stealing these as I go back to my seat, so I'll try to remember to leave them this time.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
But I thank you for your time, something needs to be said about that stuff. I hope, I hope we take that into consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Flaherty?
Just while you're here, the master plan thing got pushed through a couple of weeks ago, and you should be on that list.
I asked for it.
All right, we'll call you.
Counselor Mello and then Harris.
Go ahead.
You can come to the podium, we'll just, we're still open to questions of fact for the...
We're still doing questions of fact.
Yeah, we're doing questions of fact for the audience, but that's okay, you guys, you have something? Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that, based on what Ms. Adams said, I would like, in addition to my other questions, to see a map, including the New England states and New York, of where other fueling stations are at Old Dominion truck places. Because if we are saddling our environmental justice community with the environmental burdens of everyone else in the Northeast, we need to know that upfront. And also, I don't remember if I asked for the volume of the tertiary containment system, but I would also like that too, and thank you.
The floor is yours.
Okay, I just had one quick question. You say that there's going to be monitoring of the overflow and it's going to be taken, who's monitoring it?
Old Dominion.
So Old Dominion monitors it themselves?
You can just step up to the microphone.
Okay. So my question is, who, who checks the balance?
Can we get your name and address for the clerk again, too? I apologize.
Oh, Mary Beth Berian, 106 Roosevelt Ave.
Thank you.
I guess it's a multifaceted approach, actually. It's monitored 24 hours a day by Old Dominion's equipment, which will, in turn, if there's a problem, it initiates a warning, an alert, that there's a problem. My company also monitors it, and then even further than that, your fire marshal, your state representatives, and the EPA all have plenty to say about it and how it's done.
Anybody else, questions of fact in the audience? See, no one, oh, go ahead, come on up to the microphone.
Barbara Rokus, 272 Lockhouse Road. Just for the question that was just coming up, the monitoring, so evidently it's done with a program, what happens if we have an electrical power outage?
They do, they do not have a backup generator as part of the site plan, but they do have, they call it a storm switch, so they can go get a generator, plug it in, power the site backup.
But that would mean that someone would have to be alerted to the fact that there's a power outage at that plant, if it were 12 o'clock at night, 1 o'clock in the morning? I mean, how do you get to someone knowing that there's a power outage and that is not operating correctly?
Old Dominion has a national command center at their headquarters.
In Tennessee?
It's in North Carolina.
North Carolina, okay.
And they monitor all their sites and their, all the tractors are geo-located, so I mean, they don't have the hours.
And what would be a timeframe, by the time you get that information to the plant to put that back up and running again?
That's part of their emergency action plan, and I, I don't, I can speak to the specifics on the timeframe, if it goes out at midnight of February, it's going to be there at 1:00 in the morning, I guess, I don't know that offhand, but if the site's not going to be down and unmonitored for days, maybe it's hours.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else in the audience which, to address the counsel or questions of the petitioner? Anything else from the counsel, questions of fact? Counselor Morgan O'Leary?
Counsel Harris. Oh, thank you, Counsel Harris. Thank you, Mr. President. The, if the trucks that come in there don't refuel and get their fluids topped off there, so at other places where you, where you don't have, first of all, do you have a place somewhere else in the country, one of your locations that does not have a refilling service like this? And where, where do they go? What do they do? They just use a local gas station? Is that, because they're not going to get fluids topped off there, they're just going to get their diesel fuel? So what, and I think that's related to Counselor Mello's question about locations of your other...
Yeah, they would, they would have to go to a, the pilot, flying J, or a diesel mechanic, you know, they have to drive their tractor to a mechanic shop, basically, to get, you know, get anything topped off or serviced, if that makes, a local mechanic shop, if you will.
So how does that affect your operations if you don't have the tank there?
Well, as far as the, the fueling, I mean, that adds, you know, it adds minutes, and, you know, minutes cost dollars, so it, I mean, it affects the bottom line, and then, you know, the cost of shipping freight goes up, which affects the customer, so. Part of this is, you know, cost strategy, keeping costs down, just like, you know, a site work contractor, an excavator, he, you know, buys his fuel bulk instead of going to pilot or flying J to fill up, because it helps keep the cost down.
And one of the reasons I ask is because the, you know, the residents in that area, especially on the north side, are very concerned about all the truck traffic. So if you, if you don't have the trucks refueling there, where are they going to go in Westfield to refuel? That's, that's kind of like what I'm getting at.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's one of the, and I know to Counselwoman Barbicksky's point, the, the previous meetings back in 2018 and 19, I remember truck traffic being, you know, a hot topic, so, you know, part of, you know, OD's analysis was adding that, you know, fuel island on there, so that helps keep a trip, even though it's, you know, if the closest fuel station is a half mile away, it could be the opposite direction of the, of the interstate, so they're now making a one-mile round trip, you know, on the road unnecessarily. So it'll, it'll cut down on unnecessary trips and time that that tractor is on the road.
Thank you.
Counsel, go ahead.
Just on that theory, so, you're not trying to say that the reason Old Dominion is now, and two years later, looking for this permit and putting fuel storage on site is because they were concerned about the truck traffic in Westfield?
They, they are concerned about the truck traffic in Westfield due to the comments from all the citizens.
But weren't they two years ago?
They were, but as the logistics climate has changed in the United States, as, you know, more logistics are required, I mean, you've seen that, you know, freight now takes, you know, instead of taking one or two days to get places, it's taking three, four, five days. So, I mean, there's just a massive volume of freight that's coming through.
So it's how fast Old Dominion can move it? It's not, it's got nothing to do with the Westfield traffic?
It, it does, I mean, it's got...
Then you would have included it two years ago, when the concerns were raised then. I mean, I'm just trying to find out what actually changed in two years that now you need, you now have, Old Dominion has decided they want to fuel on site where it wasn't there two years ago.
I'm relaying what they told me, so I can, I can re-ask that question.
I would maybe re-ask for the next meeting.
I will.
Counsel Harris?
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. You were kind the last time you came, and you continue to be a kind and offer information. You may not be able to answer this, and I understand that you're trying to say the logistics and concern of Old Dominion trucks going to a fueling station, the safety factor, the time factor, but we have to balance the citizens' concerns with having the fuel tanks there. If the fuel tanks are not there, you're still going to go by the fueling station at some point in time. You're not going to make a special trip, go in here, turn around, come back out, go back out. So the way your trucks travel, I'm sure you go by a fueling station. The bottom line is, this is a business decision for money, and I'd like to know, you may not be able to answer this, but perhaps Old Dominion can answer it, how will this hinder your business, Old Dominion's business, if the fueling tanks are not specifically on your property and they are a half a mile away, when you will be going by those fueling stations, so you will be able to pull in that and you do not have to make a special trip? How do we balance the extreme concerns of our citizens versus the, what appears to be very small amount of economic situation for Old Dominion, to have these tanks versus not having these tanks on this property?
To recap that question, it's how will not having a fueling station on site hinder operations? Is that correct?
And I know it'll be economic, but is it so much so that we need to put it there and have all our citizens upset?
Just waiting for you to answer that question. Yeah, go, oh, yeah, I get it, yeah. Counselor Mello?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. If I may, that is an excellent point, and if I may ask another question of fact that will quantify what she's asking, here it goes, ready? I want to know how much money per fifteen thousand gallon tank and per month Old Dominion saves by having this on their property instead of purchasing it from the Cumberland Farms that's already set up down the street, or the Mobil that's in the other direction down the street, in between your two closest interstate highways? So either way you turn out of Madeira's Way, you're going to go past a place where you can get diesel fuel, as she says. And what I want to know is exactly how much money putting that tank on the property saves per tank, like, per fifteen thousand unit and per month? Because if we are going to, if we are going to allow another potential PFAS exposure site into our aquifer, what we need to know is what we are selling that for? Thank you.
Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. So the way I'm interpreting why you're here is that a change in Old Dominion policy is that you would like to have fueling stations at the new places you're developing, and the reason we don't have it at the other ones that you listed around New England is because those were developed in the past when that wasn't a policy. It's not because they were unsafe or, you know, for any other reason, other than Old Dominion wants to save some money now and they're requesting, every time a new place is built, they put tanks on it. That seems to me... That seems to me what you're doing here.
Generally, yes.
Okay. And then we also have this big project coming in right on the turnpike. I don't know if you drove in there today, but at the Jug Handle, there's going to be a gigantic gas station in there with a special area for trucks that you're going to drive right by every time you get on the turnpike. So I agree with Counselor Harris in the sense that, well, if it's going to save you three cents a gallon and it's going to cause us to have concerns about our aquifer and our neighbors to have concerns about leakage, three cents a gallon is not a big deal in the big scheme of things, and it helps another business in town, which does pay taxes and helps the road taxes too. So I think it's worth exploring that. If you didn't know that already, that place is going to come in with a very large diesel place right off the turnpike behind where the Friendly's sits right now. Right? No, Jim? No?
We didn't approve yet.
Well, we haven't, yeah, we haven't approved the tanks yet, but I'm... But the plan is there. It doesn't sit over the aquifer right there, I don't believe.
To be clear, we don't sit over the aquifer either, if you look on the GIS.
Yeah, I know, but there's a lot of people that don't believe that because of the way the ground slopes and all that, but there will be this big station going in there. They're spending a fortune, you know, rehabbing that exit and putting a lot of stuff in there, so. Thank you very much. So the question is, I agree with Counsel Harris, we should know what the economic difference is for you, and Old Dominion should understand that there is an option that's very close to where they're going to be getting on the highway. There's going to be plenty of traffic flow there.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have two questions, but one is on this, on your site, you would be fueling just the tractor, not attached to the trailer, correct? Unless it was leaving the site?
Correct.
Okay. And my second, and I would like to probably comment with that if I can. One of the things that impressed me about Old Dominion and their equipment was they actually monitor, like idling. It's a completely computerized system. Their equipment is outstanding and so is their record. If, and I used to have a DPW license and drive school bus, we would gas up as we were leaving, just top off and go. It's orderly, it's very quick, so all you're doing is fueling up and it's, because there's no accounting, it's just done. It's safer, and part of my license had passengers on. You're fueling a vehicle with nobody around you. It's very efficient. You're not trying, you're not at a gas station waiting to get in line, putting in, you know, a good amount of fuel, which can be slow. It's just safer. It's way more efficient, because even before you've left the facility, you're fueled up, you've driven 100 feet to get to that thing, and then you just go. And if they're fueling up tractors not connected to a trailer out there, that is preferable. Okay? So I would think with that, my other question would be, this location, one of the things that Old Dominion was doing with its business plan and why they chose Westfield, was trying to reroute traffic north of us as well as south. That was part of the overall plan of Old Dominion coming to Westfield in the first place. For probably some of the same reasons, having the fueling in that location rather than, let's say, Vermont or Connecticut probably also makes sense. I know that's not a question, but does that, is that part of the equation?
Yes, that makes sense.
Yeah, because it's not always economics, and he's right about capacity. People are moving so much by freight, and it's all LTL.
Correct.
Which is four pallets or less usually. That's its own animal. And that's a lot of little stuff, there's a lot of companies, they have trucks that are smaller to design this sort of thing. So this is a highly efficient system, and Old Dominion, they're not the cheapest, you know, it costs good money to use Old Dominion, but they do things right, so I will say that, and, right, anyways. But thank you for answering those questions.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, I guess I sit here and I sit on both sides. I'm a business owner too. I get it. I know what it costs to run a business, and I get, we want to keep, you know, the public safe, but some of the questions, I just feel a little unfair to say, how much is it, are you going to save if you don't do this? And I don't think you can even come up with that answer. I don't think Old Dominion can. I mean, Counselor Beltrandi, what are you going to save if you don't have your storage on your place? You're asking the same, why aren't you asking Counselor Beltrandi that question? It's the same question. How are we going, they can't come up with that number. You know, I want to keep that side of town safe, I want to keep our water safe, but some of these questions, Old Dominion can't even answer. And I think a financial question to the company, that's not what they're here for. They're here to get a gas permit. We may say no to them, or we may say yes, but asking them financial questions on how they run their company isn't fair, because, don't ask me that to my company, because I'm not going to tell you. And it's not fair to ask the question to me what it takes to run a funeral home. That's not fair to Old Dominion. It's fair to Old Dominion to ask where the water's going and how you're going to separate it, but financial questions like that is not fair to this company, or is it to several other companies that may come in here that are in front of us for a gas permit?
Fair enough. Counselor Morganelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask one more question. I'm going to ask that you bring this question to Mr. Gant, your president and CEO and the management team, that you withdraw, withdraw this permit, this application for this license for the fuel tank. That's my question, I would like you to ask them, to really, really consider the fact that the people that live there don't want it, that we have this PFAS and PFAS problem, that we have this problem already, there's a big concern there, you know, and that there's plenty of other places to get fuel. And yeah, it might cost a little more, but just maybe, that's my question, that you please ask them for me to withdraw. Thank you.
Counselor Beltrandi?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Just keep in mind, you know, the municipality, Westfield, we have bulk storage, right at the DPW yard, tanks above ground, in an environmentally sensitive area, there's a river right there, we have containment, we do all the same things. We buy the fuel in bulk and we fuel our trucks because it's convenient, okay? Nothing else. Those trucks are going 24 hours a day during snowstorms, they don't go to gas stations, they go to our bulk fill station. We're doing that as a city. The requirements that they're going to have for Old Dominion are far more stringent than we put those tanks in at the DPW. So just throwing it out there.
Counselor Morganelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. And one thing I forgot to say is, thank you for being here, and we have heard good things about Old Dominion as a company. We know that you serve the community as well, and you serve the trucking industry well, and, you know, there's not a lot of dirt about the company out there. You do have a good company, and I remember the gentleman that came in a couple of years ago talking about that, and that was asked of him. So you're highly respected, and I hope that continues, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of fact?
I have a question for the future.
Unfortunately, you got to, yeah.
So I'm just, we're a very progressive company. Has Old Dominion ever considered electric trucks? Because we would love to be the first city to entertain and have a trucking company that started using electric trucks.
They are looking at it. They are interested.
Thank you. That would be great.
Any other facts from everybody in the room? Seeing none.
I'm just going to just say from here...
Is it question, question's a fact, Mary?
Well, we're waiting, and I hope that everybody, I can ask everybody, it's risk versus health and safety. I mean, you can save money.
Marian, it's got to be a question. I can't...
I cannot ask a question, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Close it.
Counselor Solis?
Nope.
Anybody else?
I know the plan... I don't have a question.
Oh, no, I didn't either. Go ahead.
Just before we go, I know the plan is to leave this open, and the Ward 1 counselor will do so. What?
Can I ask you what, just...
Oh, sure.
I know that I'm going to get a link to this, but I'm still, I have a problem understanding some of the questions. Will there be a written, can I get them written?
What I can...
Counselor Mello, I'm sorry. I really do wear hair and aids, and I have really a hard time understanding with the mask, which I agree with, by the way.
We could have the city clerk compile a list of questions from other counselors and so on. And then also the link to the meeting. Yeah, the easiest way to get the answers, no problem.
I'd like to be able to bring you the answers back to them, so that's it. I just want to make sure I got them right.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I know the plan is to extend the public hearing until two weeks from now, but, and I know we get to a point of for and against, but knowing that this public hearing will stay open, I do have to open it up for for and against at this point. So is anybody, we'll start with against the petition right now, and if you're, you know, against the petition, you can just come up, give your name and address, city clerk, and you can do that.
Mr. President, if you're leaving it open, do you need to do that?
I don't think we really do need to, but it's processed, that's, I'm just worried about...
No, I don't think you can leave it open.
I'm fair, I'm comfortable with that, I just, I know there's going to be...
I think you can leave it open, because I haven't seen the documents.
Right, correct. Fair enough.
I'm comfortable with that, so, Counselor?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing till our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Did I take, recognize this time? Does that want it up?
I'll be honest, it was the Ward 1 counselor that already asked to do that. That's fine.
Well, I was unrecognized 30 minutes ago.
It's true. 30.
Now you know what it feels like.
And my apologies, Counselors, always.
As long as the Ward 1 counselor can be a part of that motion.
I don't like it, but I second the motion.
Okay, all right. Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion on the continuance? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. All right.
Motion to return to regular order.
Second.
Where are you going?
Excuse me. There will be a...
Motion to suspend the meeting? We haven't. No, other than the questions of fact, there is not.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We are going to, it's open, so we're going to do it again in two weeks, so at that point, we'll do a for and against, and a questions of fact again. Okay?
Motion to return to regular order.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public participation. Communications from the mayor. Counselor Oniski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Requesting immediate consideration of the acceptance of a memorandum of understanding in the amount of $22,087 to accept an incentive payment from the Westfield Gas and Electric for the green communities lighting projects throughout the city.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This grant is from the GE for about half a dozen projects that the city has done throughout some of the city buildings with energy-efficient lighting and electric, and that money to do that work came from a grant about a year ago, and now this is money coming back from the G and E for the efficiency.
Any questions on the immediate consideration? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Counselors.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number two, requesting immediate consideration of a resolution confirming prior actions of the city council to correct a title issue of Lionel and Joyce property.
Second.
Didn't want to take a shot at it.
You want no part of that name, do you?
Nope.
That's Joaquin. That's Joaquin.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. What this is, is that the city in 1985 was given property by Warren Oco Savings Bank to cover a tax that was owed on this property. So the city accepted this property. Now, the correct way for the city to accept the property is for the city council to go and, you know, approve a resolution, and then the mayor signs it. So the mayor signed off that the city will accept this city property, however, the point is here that the city council did not approve of it, or at least that couldn't be found in any records. Fast forward to last month, a sale goes through on the property, and it doesn't clear tax title because this item that should have been taken care of in 1985 by the city council wasn't taken care of. So in order to clear it up, there's a resolution that kind of backdates, but authorizes this city, or the city, to accept this property the correct way, so the sale will go through. The tax title attorneys are all in agreement with the resolution, this will clear it up in the deed and make this a saleable property for the owner. Thank you.
Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there just a lot of property-changing hands? I feel like I've done this for several times now, and I'm just wondering, did we chain someone up in the registry of deeds to go through things, or is, what is going on?
I don't know. Was the counselor next to you the mayor in 1985?
85 was before my... Just for the record.
I saw you checking your calendar.
This, now, why it wasn't caught the first time on the sale is a legitimate question, I don't know, but the reason this is coming up now is because they're looking to sell the property, and their title insurance has caught it on the title, and so that they have to clear it up. So I do think you are definitely seeing more properties change hands out there, and when the lawyers are doing the closing docs and running the titles, they're catching these, you know, mistakes that have been made, so this is to clear it up, although you're well outside the 20 years, they probably got it anyway, but that's okay.
So you were the lawyer the first time?
I could have been.
Any other questions or concerns? Do we need a roll call on this one?
Yes.
Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews-Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
A motion to read the resolution by title only.
Second. Motion made and seconded, and just title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Oniski?
Yeah, I got to find it now. Anybody have it handy? Okay.
Two?
You have to say the last name, though.
Thanks for bringing that up.
A resolution confirming prior...
Yeah, just what the title is. Do you have that in front of you?
I've got it.
Counselor Mello's got it.
I have it.
I yield the Florida Counselor Alley to read it, the title.
A resolution confirming prior actions of the city council to correct a title issue.
Second.
That's it?
Exactly.
So let it be written, so let it be done.
Counselor Sullivan?
Mr. President, I would ask that the following items be read by the city clerk and referred to finance, and that at items 19 and 20 be put on the public website for the public to view, and I would ask that items 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 19, and 20 be referred to finance.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on...
Just two real quick things. One is, I want to thank Counselor Matthew Kane for her work on item 6 earlier today, and although Chairman Figgy is in Omaha, trust me, there was a lot of phone calls and text
grant from Springfield Materials Recycling Facility Advisory Board to the Health Department. 7 is an appropriation of $3,863 from reserve for unforeseen to weights and measures full-time salary account. 8 is a transfer of $1,532.98 from fiscal year '22 indemnification account to fiscal year '21 indemnification account. 9 is an appropriation of $15,000 from Community Preservation Historic Account to CPA Hamden Hampshire Canal Account. 10 is appropriation of $100,000 as follows. $65,000 from Community Preservation Account to CPA Lamson Building Account, and $35,000 from Community Preservation Historic Account to CPA Lamson Building Historic Account. 11 is submitting a resolution to amend the Clean Technique Labs Host Community Agreement.
Yeah, Madam City Clerk, that's 11. 11 is gonna be Oniski.
Nineteen and twenty.
Nineteen and twenty.
Oh, I'm going all the way down.
Although I'm sure all of us would not disagree, but.
Nineteen, nineteen is the next one?
Yeah, nineteen.
Nineteen is submitting information relative to the city's expenses incurred in fighting and preventing the spread of COVID, and receipts from the various sources to deal with the pandemic between March 2020 and August 2021.
And number 20.
Number 20, a city auditor, Vicky Morrow, submitting the fiscal year '21 end-of-the-year transfer list as requested by the council.
Great, thank you. So, we have item 5, Counselor Oniski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please ask Madam Clerk to read item 5, and send to LNO and Law, please.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, item five.
Thank you. That didn't go to, that wasn't a finance one?
Read that one.
Five wasn't, oh, did you already read?
I think I read it, yeah.
Oh, she already read it.
I did read it.
That's all right.
That just goes to LNO.
Yeah, five's going to LNO. Thank you, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I shouldn't. Where are we now?
I think you're up to 11.
Eleven, right?
Eleven, okay.
Yeah. Counselor Oniski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please ask Madam City Clerk to read item 11, and send to LNO and Legal.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam City Clerk.
Number 11 is submitting a resolution to amend the Clean Technique Labs Host Community Agreement to extend their deadline one year to September 10th, 2022.
Item 12, Counselor Oniski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 12 is submitting a transmittal of Servicestar Realities LLC's 199 Servicestar Industrial Application under MGL Chapter 121A. And per Chapter 121A, Section 6, I make a motion that the city council and planning board schedule a joint public hearing on September 16th, 2021, to take testimony and consider the application of Servicestar LLC to enter into a Chapter 121A, Section 6A agreement, and that the public hearing be duly advertised and notices mailed to the butters as prescribed in Chapter 121A, Section 6.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I can briefly go over this, as far as what I know. This Chapter 121, 121A is a state process where this Servicestar LLC can get a, one of the major parts is get a reduction in taxes to put forward a, well, it's a computer center here in Westfield. So, part of this process is having very specific dates with very specific groups. For instance, planning board and city council have to have a joint meeting, and, don't quote me on all this, but then the planning board has to make a recommendation, the city council accepts a recommendation. So, there's a series of dates of which I don't have yet, but we'll be going through them. So, the first step in this process, before it even goes to any committee, is to have this meeting together. So, we'll learn more at the meeting about what the details of the project are. A lot of it got put on the shared drive today, but the details will really be given at that meeting.
Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to amend the motion to have the files that were put on the shared drive put in public on the city website, so that all the butters and all of the members of the environmental justice community in which this project is smack the middle, again, Ward 1, I would like them to have full access to all of the information that's in that folder now, like tomorrow, so that they can be prepared for the meeting, just the same way we're preparing for the meeting. Thank you.
Second. Motion made on the amendment, Counselor Oniski.
My comment on that is, can we just make a separate amendment for that, or a separate motion for that?
However you want to do it, as long as it happens, I don't care how.
This amendment, or this, the motion I made needed to be read a certain way, and I don't know if the amendment's gonna screw it up.
As long as they get access, however you need it.
And I'm all for that, but, you know.
Sure, we'll draw my mission.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Nope.
No, no, it's just, we're drawing the amendment.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, Counselor.
So, first, I like this project, and I think it's a great project. I think we should get a definition whether this Section 121A applies to this particular property, because 121A is kind of a fast-track program with very defined things, but it also only applies to certain types of properties, and they're usually derelict, or, you know, really bad neighborhoods and that kind of thing. And this land isn't that. So, can we get the law department to weigh in? You know, as part, I don't want to slow it down or anything, but can we make sure that this qualifies as 121A? When I read 121A, the list of things that described the property did not seem to jive with what this property is. So, I want to make sure we're following the right track. Maybe Counselor Sullivan knows, because he's in this business, but.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with his motion and having the law department give an opinion, that's fine. The state will have already opined on that question as to whether or not it's even eligible.
Okay.
So, but.
That's perfect.
I have no problem, and certainly not looking to slow it down. I have no problem if the law department is not part of this motion.
Yeah, if the state did it, if the state already certified it, I'd be happy to see that, too.
They have to do that, there's a whole, there's a whole process. But I think that's a legitimate question, and there should at least be a public answer to it.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Oniski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, the law department has been working on this with the community development, you know, departments, you know, I hate to assume, but, I mean, they've gone through this, and they've gone through this, and they've gone through this.
But if you read the opening paragraph of 121A, it's very, very strict about what applies and what doesn't, and.
And one would expect that they would have done that before they've gone through all of this. But, I mean, that could be a great question, I think, for September 16th. They'll know it's coming, believe me.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so just on your motion, any other questions? If you need a roll call, I would assume. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Morgan Alley.
Yes.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Alley.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandi.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Your motion.
A motion to have the folder that Peter Miller put up for us on this project placed on the city's website, so that all of the members of the environmental justice community and public can access it, just as we ask.
Second. Motion made and seconded, the motion, any other concerns or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam City Clerk?
13 is submitting the appointment of Marian.
McGlyon.
McGlyon. Okay. 31 Union Street, as a member of the cultural council for a term to expire the first Monday of August 2024. 14 is submitting the appointment of Joseph Pollan, 52 Tannell Drive, as a member of the cultural council for a term to expire the first Monday of August 2024. 15 is submitting the reappointment of Michael Ingram, 147 Russellville Road, Southampton, as a member of the historical commission for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2024. 16 is submitting the reappointment of Crystal Hollister, 110 Hoy Oak Road, as a member of the historical commission for a term to expire the first Monday of June 2024. 17 is submitting the reappointment of Joanne Terrell, 419 Southwick Road, as a member of the Commission for Citizens with Disabilities, for a term to expire the first Monday of June 2023. 18 is submitting the reappointment of William Gunnett, 29 Cardinal Lane, as a member of the Airport Commission, for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2024. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Madam City Clerk. We are down to item 22. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration for this routine administrative function, which we do on a yearly basis, we've done for many years, for Frankie Gonzalez.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the suspension of the rules. Any concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Harris?
Thank you. DPW, we in the Natural Resources Division employee Frankie Gonzalez, submitting a GL disclosure to also serve as an auxiliary police officer with the Westfield Police Department, a motion to accept that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion, any questions or comments?
Yeah, it's self-explanatory.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam City Clerk?
13 is submitting the appointment of Marian.
McGlyon.
McGlyon. Okay. 31, Union Street, as a member of the cultural council for a term to expire the first Monday of August 2024. 15 is submitting the reappointment of Michael Ingram, 147 Russellville Road, Southampton, as a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2024. 16 is submitting the reappointment of Crystal Hollister, 110 Hoy Oak Road, as a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire the first Monday of June 2024. 17 is submitting the reappointment of Joanne Terrell, 419 Southwick Road, as a member of the Commission for Citizens with Disabilities, for a term to expire the first Monday of June 2023. 18 is submitting the reappointment of William Gunnett, 29 Cardinal Lane, as a member of the Airport Commission, for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2024. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Madam City Clerk. We are down to item 22. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration for this routine administrative function, which we do on a yearly basis, we've done for many years, for Frankie Gonzalez.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the suspension of the rules. Any concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Harris?
Thank you. DPW, we in the Natural Resources Division employee Frankie Gonzalez, submitting a GL disclosure to also serve as an auxiliary police officer with the Westfield Police Department, a motion to accept that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion, any questions or comments?
Yeah, it's self-explanatory.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?